Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, August 9th. Justin, call the board, please.
Mrs. Steph.
Here.
Mr. Johnston. Here. Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Abramill. Here. Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
All members present?
Do you please stand and say the Fledge of Allegiance with us, followed by a moment of silence. The Fledge of Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America. It is a different holiday for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Crystal Russell with the legislative report, please.
So I just have one thing tonight. It's House Bill 82, which passed, and that revises the state report card system for Ohio's public school districts. A few changes to this. It eliminates the A through F rating that was previously given to school districts. It now has a star rating, 1 through 5. I'm going to give some explanation about what each rating means. Has the same six components that were originally in the state report card system, but each one has been adjusted a little bit. One of the big things that I saw was that, and I didn't write it down, I should have put that preparedness or readiness after high school. I think it used to just focus on the kids that went to college and look at that as meeting that measure. And now it looks like it's incorporating whether they're going into the workforce, college, military, and possibly even vocational schools or something like that in order to meet that criteria and have met that measure. It did not look like that was all going to be rolled out this year or even next year. Some of those changes would be in the 24, 25 school year, so we'll just have to keep an eye on those if those roll out, become active.
Mrs. Ennis? Mr. Pepin with the superintendent's report.
Okay, we're going to start off by talking about the laptop fees. Justin, Sean and I met today, and we've been talking about this before we met as well, and thinking about whether or not we should roll back the $50 fee for laptops. And Sean just put a slide, is going to put a slide up here. And we're going to recommend to the board that we're just going to roll that $50 fee back. We can afford to do it for this year, and under the circumstances, I think, for parents. It's been a difficult year for everyone, obviously. It's been more than a year that we've been involved with COVID, and I just think that families at this time could use a little bit of a break, and we can afford to do it. Do you want to let people know, though, that it would be a one-time thing this year? If we can afford to do it next year, we will, but let's look at it one year at a time. You can read for yourself up there what we still would expect, though. Just because we're rolling back the fees doesn't mean that students wouldn't be responsible for the laptops. And lost or missing laptop bags would be at the cost that you see there. Missing chargers would be the cost that you see. So we're not just writing it off and saying, okay, you can damage a laptop or lose things and not have to worry about it. So we will hold the students accountable. They've done a good job overall. The kids, it's just a few issues that we've had, so we're wanting to do this for our community, to take that $50 fee away. I think we told you this, but the 6th and 7th grade is they're not taking laptops home with them this year. So this would apply, a $50 fee does apply to them, they'll get the $50 back. But going forward, we're only going to have the laptops going home, 8 through 12. Hopefully you're okay with that, and I think it's good for the community and good for the kids. Okay, item number two is recommend a resolution for the board to acknowledge June 19th, Juneteenth as a federal holiday.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions on that? Call the board, please.
No.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, item number three is to recommend a resolution to approve a one-year additional duties contract for the 2021, 2022 school year for Kurt Ennis as the head soccer coach, Level 23, and Lenny Ennis for the head cheer advisor, Level 11, Step 3.
I'll second. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Abstain.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0, and one extension.
Okay, item number four, going through our January board meeting and talking about a recent situation that we had the need to take a resignation from a teacher that was after the hiring process, after the deadline date, we decided that we needed to strengthen the language, and so we talked to our board attorney. Actually, our board attorney pointed out that we need to add some additional language for authorization of the superintendent to do these, to employment of personnel and acceptance of resignations, just to strengthen what was not in that January board meeting. So I'll read both of these. Employment of personnel between board meetings. Authorize the superintendent during periods when this board is not in session to make offers of employment directly to candidates for either teaching or non-teaching positions on behalf of this board, and to acknowledge acceptance of such offers on behalf of this board, subject to a subsequent vote of ratification by this board. Provided, however, that the ratification by this board, the employment shall be deemed effective as of the date and time of the employee's acceptance of the superintendent's offer. So any questions on what that's authorizing the superintendent to do? Okay, acceptance of resignations. Authorize the superintendent on behalf of this board to accept resignations and resignation agreements which have been submitted by employees during times when this board is not in session, subject to ratification by this board. Provided, however, that the ratification by this board, such resignations shall be deemed effective as of the date and time of the superintendent's acceptance. Any question on that one?
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
That's all I had on my superintendent's report.
We have Mr. Pinker with the treasurer's report.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for July 31st, 2021. That is attachment A.
I'll move. Second.
Okay. Chart A1, we're first going to look at the general fund revenue by month. For the first month of the fiscal year. That's okay. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district has received 4.1 million in general fund revenue, compared to the five-year historical average of roughly $4 million. This number is slightly skewed because of the timing of property tax advances and the amount of the advances which were paid in full by the end of August. As shown in the chart above, property taxes are collected in July and August, and again in February and March. To date, the district has received 17.4% of its revenue compared to its five-year average of $4 million. Moving on to food service. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district received $106 in food service revenue compared to the five-year historical average of $31,210. Again, this number is going to be skewed because in fiscal year 17, and fiscal year 18, and again in fiscal year 19, the district received payments for meals from previous school years and school months from ODE. So again, we were just getting paid in arrears, basically, from ODE there. We've changed that up currently, so we're basically month-to-month now. And since we didn't have any students in July or August, or part of August moving forward, again, we'll have low revenue in August as well. But to date, the district has received 0% of the food service revenue compared to the five-year average of $631,000. Moving on to all funds. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district received 4.28 million in all funds, compared to the five-year historical average of 4.15. To date, the district has received 15.8% of its revenue, all funds, compared to the five-year average of $27,161,278. Moving on now from revenue to expenditures. Taking a look at the general fund for the first month of the fiscal year. The district has spent 2.5 million from the general fund compared to the five-year historical average of 2.19. To date, the district has spent 10.9% of its general fund expenditures compared to the five-year average of 23.15 million. Moving on to food service expenditures. For the first month of the fiscal year, we have spent $43,572 from food service compared to the five-year historical average of $34,903. To date, the district has spent 6.8% of its food service expenditures compared to the five-year average of $644,818. And now we're going to look at all fund expenditures. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district has spent 2.7 million from all funds compared to the five-year historical average of 2.4 billion. To date, the district has spent 10.3% of all fund expenditures compared to the five-year average of 26.18 billion. And then lastly, we'll take a look at our cash balance. Looking at the general fund first. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district has a general fund cash balance of $19.5 million compared to the five-year historical average of $16.8 billion. The district ended the first month with its general fund 116.5% higher than the five-year July historical average. Moving on to food service. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district has a food service cash balance of $139,635 compared to the five-year historical average of $264,230. The district ended the first month with its food service fund 52.8% lower than the five-year historical July average. And lastly, we'll take a look at all cash. For the first month of the fiscal year, the district has a cash balance of $23.1 million compared to the five-year historical average of $20.1 million. The district ended the first month with its fund balance 114.8% higher than the five-year July historical average. Moving on to our investments. For the first month in fiscal year 2022, we have earned a total of $14,877.87 on interest compared to $18,253.53 in fiscal year 21. So again, just for looking at July to last July, it's a difference of $3,382.66, so we're 11.5% less. Any questions?
No questions, without a comment. So typically in the past, your summaries-
Yeah.
-have been more of a year-over-year comparison-
Correct.
-versus a five-year historical.
Hmm.
Why the change?
Laying them out every time, it just got to be, it got to be a lot. By the time you have five of them, you can start getting an average. When you're looking at two or three, you want to see those numbers, but as you get to five, your ebbs and flows of revenue and expenditures throughout kind of make up an average.
I know why we do a five-year forecast into the future. I just think when you look five years into the past, so much has changed, right? Because it's really not apples to apples anymore, because now you're talking about a different contract, you're talking about different wage rates, you're talking about the way we treat our food service account, right? Now it's, we've got all those other salaries in there, which was the right thing to do, but if somebody were looking at it and they'd say, boy, your expenditures have really changed over those five years, where if you looked at year-over-year, it really hasn't. We've actually done better, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's a different, I'm just saying it's a different picture, that's all.
I guess, you know, it's good discussion. What do you prefer? Do you like to see the numbers, or do you like-
I don't necessarily need to see every year laid out. My, personally, tell me year-over-year. How did I do compared to last year?
Year-over-year?
No. That's just me, so don't change it on my, you know what I mean? I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's good discussion. I mean, again, how much information is too much information? And what point does that old information become stale, you know, so?
I like, I like the way you've got the chart laid out-
Yeah.
-with five years, right? But maybe for the summary, just tell me year-over-year, compared to last year, for better or worse, whatever, right?
Yeah.
In my opinion, I just think, because actually-
Does that make sense?
-that way actually tells a much better story in here, I think.
Sure.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the August 2021 appropriations. Attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
What we had to do, so again, in the, in July, we need the temporary appropriations, so we had a spending ability. Now that we have a month under our belts, the spending got done through the month of July, now we need to start setting our final appropriations. So what I did is I pulled what we had budgeted, and those are our appropriations for each one of our funds. The front page here, this is our certificate of estimated resources. This is giving you what our cash balance was on July 1. It includes an estimate of what taxes we're going to collect, and it also gives an estimate of other sources of income that we're going to collect. So the far right gives us the total amount of spending ability that we have for each one of these funds. What we do from there is we then break all of our funds down, general fund, bond, permanent improvement, food service, on and so forth. From there, I listed what we had as temporary appropriations, and then for the August appropriations, I have what's listed as budgeted right now. And then the last page here gives a breakdown of what our certificate of estimated resources was, or is, what our appropriations are, and if you subtract the two, that gives us a difference. So that says that even if we spent everything that we have appropriated, we will still have that far difference on the right, left in cash.
Any questions? Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number three, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the agreement between Educational Funding Group, Inc., Vermillion Local School District for Emergency Connectivity Fund, ECF Consulting Services, from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. That is attachment C.
Come on.
Second.
Any questions on that? Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number four, recommend a resolution for the board to appoint a delegate and alternate to the Ohio School Boards Association Annual Meeting, and that is attachment D. So what we're going to need to do here is just go around the table here and select the delegates.
Didn't we do that last week?
I thought that happened last meeting.
It was the first show. Didn't you get appointed?
I think I was the last one to show up, so I was, yeah, downgraded.
So you're not naming yourself?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, I'm just making it official today, yeah.
Let's make it official.
I don't think we voted on it last time, though, it was discussed in the, yeah.
I thought it was kind of voted on.
It is now.
4-1.
4-1.
Get motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Volunteer to be the alternate.
Yeah.
How about that?
Perfect.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number five, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the agreement between Tyler Technologies, Vermillion Local School District, for the installment and the first two years of GPS service for 30 school buses, a cost of $46,549.67. That is attachment E.
I'll second.
The 30 school buses, what, is that, what portion of our buses is that?
It's actually going to be, it's going to be right around 20 buses, and what we have is, it's up to 30 buses is what the price is for. What they'll do is they'll, they'll ship somebody out this way, they will install everything on the buses. The software itself will give the, well, actually, it links with Power Schools, so we can tell, you know, bus five, it links to Power Schools, it lets everybody know who's on bus five. If by hand, by chance that bus gets stopped by a train, and it's running five minutes late, we can just send a text directly out to all the parents, let them know the bus isn't running behind. It also links up to the maintenance systems in the buses, so we'll let our mechanics know if something's going wrong before it actually goes wrong.
But this covers all of our bus routes?
Correct. It covers everything. It also links with person trains, so it gets linked into our GPS and our maps as well.
Nice. So every one of our buses will have this?
Correct.
I like that. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Just sorry, just a quick note on that. That was supposed to be installed by the beginning of the school year. We've just been informed that they're running a couple weeks behind, so we'll let the community know when that app will be available. Unfortunately, like everything, right now, it's running a little bit behind with installs and delivery equipment and things like that, so we're caught up in what else is at this point, as far as deliveries go.
It's actual, the microchips, we're not able to obtain the microchips needed for that right now.
Is that from the Safety and Security Fund?
Yes. Number six, recommend a resolution to approve the $600 donation from Joseph Messer to the girls' golf, and a donation of tables and chairs for the Saylorway Library from M.C. Russell, Inc.
Move. I'll second.
I'm staying, M.C. Russell is actually a medicine company, so just see now why I'm sitting that one out.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Abstain.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0, and one extension.
I just wanted to thank everybody for their donations. We truly appreciate every penny, every hour of your time that is donated to the district. Okay, number, and thank you for your report. Number seven is the Consent Agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the July 12th, 2021 regular meeting. Number two, approve the Day Treatment Purchase Service Agreement with GCL Education Services, LLC, for the 2021, 2022 for district students' medical treatment at a Village Network residential facility. Number three, approve the transportation agreement between Amherst Exempt Village Schools and Vermillion Local School District for Amherst to transport VLSD student from and agreed upon point with Vermillion to and from Puff, Willow Creek, Grafton, Ohio at a cost of $58 per day for the 2021, 2022 school year. Number four, approve the revision of district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Neola for Read Policy 5136 and Review Policy 2413 with a date change from 2015 to 2021. Number five, approve the 2021, 2022 student handbook for Vermillion Elementary, Saylorway Middle, and Vermillion High Schools as per previously viewed. Number six, approve the 2021, 2022 student fees. Vermillion Elementary School, $35. Saylorway Middle School, 4th grade, $35. Saylorway Middle School, 5th through 7th grade, $35. $45 with band, and Vermillion High School per course. Number seven, approve the following employment action resignation. Reese Virgin, Vermillion High School Assistant Volleyball Coach, effective July 30th, 2021. Move Madeline Nader from 7th grade volleyball to Vermillion High School Assistant Volleyball Coach, Level 16, Step 0. Skylar Shaw, Monitor, Saylorway Middle School, effective August 9th. Brett Dawson, Instrumental Music, SMS, and VHS, effective July 27th. Number eight, approve the maternity leave for Catherine Vecchio from November 8th, 2021 to January 14th, 2022. Number nine, a one-year substitute contract for the 2021, 2022 contract school year to Nancy German, Bus Monitor. David Buzik, Bus Driver. Madeline Rubin, Leam, Bus Driver. Number 10, a one-year classified limited contract to the 2021, 2022 school year to Mackenzie Keener, Educational Agent, VHS. Sherry Wolf, Bus Driver. Heidi Watson, Food Service, SMS. Number 11, a one-year additional duties contract for the 2021, 2022 school year, too, as listed. Number 12, a one-year supplemental contract, non-employee, for the 2021, 2022 school year, too, as listed. Number 13, special projects rate at $28 an hour contract for 2021, 2022. Kitty Harkle Road, Lawyer, up to 25 hours summer school. Laura Moyer, 10 hours summer school. Anna Marie Krieger, 10 hours summer school, and Adam Beckwith, Band. Number 14, additional duties contract for the 2020, 2021 school year to Christine Turner, Technical Musical Director, Level 7, Step 0. Number 15, special projects rate for $41.04 per hour up to additional 10 hours from August 1st through the 31st, 2021, and up to 10 additional hours from September 1st through the 30th, 2021, for Brooks Backford. Anything need to be removed?
There was a difference in numbers, were there?
Yeah. School fees?
I said, like, 35 or 47. You said 35 and 45. Item 6.
Five and six. Oh, I thought it was 35.
I, well, that's, no, for the Saylorway Middle School, I have 35 and 47.
That's what I have. Did I say that?
You said 45.
I said 45.
I have 35.
I have written 37.
So do I.
I have 35.
Somebody handwrote, somebody manwrote 37 in here.
Oh, I thought I scribbled on that. That's supposed to be a 37. I was like, why did I write on it? I thought when I was going over-
I thought the same thing, too, I looked over and it was all the way.
That's my bad. I'm sorry. Are you good then?
We're good, yeah.
Okay.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abramill.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, number nine, public participation. The Board President reserves the right to, we don't do it all the time, right? Okay. The public participation section of the Board of Education Agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, and/or questions. The Board welcomes you and your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the Board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of the rights of others. Second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should have first addressed the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. Would anyone like to come and address the board? If you would like to even come up to the podium and speak with us.
Can we just talk about things, or it has to be official?
It doesn't have to be.
Can I just have a conversation?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Julie Minty, and my kids go to Vermillion. And my main concern is for next year, I want to make sure that we don't repeat last year and go virtual again, as well as, I believe strongly that masks should be optional and up to the parents. So I just wanted to kind of engage in a conversation. So I just wanted to kind of engage in a conversation, to kind of touch base, to see how you all feel about that and kind of like how your thought process goes with decision making. Because I feel like last year I emailed multiple times and it was just, the response was, I need with the Health Department and we'll keep you posted. It wasn't, there wasn't too much engagement other than the town halls that were affected. So how do you go about making those decisions?
Before we go on, does everyone feel the same about?
I want to know what that year's gonna look like for my kid. You know, like what's the policies gonna be in place, what's on the table, what's not on the table?
In terms of masks?
Masks, testing kids, vaccination being mandatory to go to school, all those things are concerning me. And if those are on the table this year, I'm probably gonna take my kid out of the district. You know, and I think a lot of other parents feel the same way. And we need to know where you guys stand with our kids on, in the middle of all this. That's, I mean, we need to know. So I know some of that is moment to moment based on stuff, but, or the situation at hand. But the way that it's looking, it's looking like a lot of states are gonna start locking down again and that the same procedures that were used last year are gonna be used this year, maybe even more, you know. And I just, I watch my kid go through that, and I'm not gonna have my kid go through that again.
Does anyone feel differently about masks or any, anyone else to say? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I just, frankly, it's better to have a piece of paper over your mouth than have a tube down your kid's throat and watch him die.
So you're in favor of wearing the masks rather than?
I, I mean, I'm going to go by what our levels in Erie County are as to what, how many people are actually sick, how the hospitals look, all those things. If kids are, if it starts tending downward towards kids being, becoming more and more sick, we have more and more kids sick, then that's something that, you know, I think should be looked at, and we should go by science rather than YouTube.
I think it was well said that, you know, putting a, a piece of paper in front of one's mouth instead of having tubes down their, their throat.
Where's the real science in that?
In my business, I'm in filtration business, and I've been filtering air in air purifiers for thirty years. And the fact remains that if you do put a piece of paper in front of somebody's mouth or nose, actually does not do anything to prevent the microscopic size that this virus is from, from going anywhere on your body, in your eyes, in your ears, doesn't stop it. It will allow some of it, if it's in the air, to get collected. But if it's getting collected here, it's also going down through the gaps in the mask and it also is going through the mask because it's not, it's not thick enough, it's not dense enough to stop the size of that, that particle. So it would seem to me that it's a matter of personal choice, that if you feel that your son or daughter that's attending class is in danger and if you believe that the mask works, then, my suggestion is you have your child wear a mask to school. There are equal, there are arguments on both sides of the science. And I'm, I'm not saying that, that the science as presented today in all areas of, of, of CDC and whomever else, they're not, they're, it's not, it's not a, it's not a hundred percent accurate on any of it. It's a newer virus and I don't think anybody really has total answers as to what's going to protect or what's not going to protect. So I understand that Sandusky Schools have already have a COVID policy in place for this year. And so my question, before we started talking about this, my question is, do you, do we, Vermillion Schools, have a COVID policy for the upcoming, written for the upcoming school year?
So I'll answer your question, but we've got a counterpoint here. Let her make the counterpoint and then I'll.
Sure, absolutely.
Generally.
So masks actually, for the most part, and you're, you work as a doctor. As a physician, yes, you're a practitioner. You wear a mask when you're close by so that you don't put your germs on other people. The mask actually primarily, at least the cloth or the paper, to trap your droplets, which aren't large enough to get caught on the mask. And those droplets actually stick the tiny particles together and it keeps for the most part everything in. And yes, it does kind of go on, but it doesn't spread as much as if you were just to breathe out. So something is always better than nothing. You wear a scuba suit and you have a cage when you go into shark-infested waters to protect yourself. I'm just saying, it is a choice. And I think we should have a written thing and people should be able to choose how they should do that. But let's put it out that masks actually protect others and rather than just yourself. It's about thirty percent protection of keeping the particles, and that's also why they had the six feet distance as well. So those are the facts and there you go.
So a lot has been said, and I'm gonna try to recap what, what's been said and what was gone. Where we were, where we are, and where we're going, that's kind of how I can summarize this here. Where we were, you know, a parent made the comment that you didn't think that there was enough communication last year. Alls I could say is that I think that we did hold the town hall meetings, we did try to communicate with you as often as we could. Yes, there were changes. There was no perfect answer in all of this, unfortunately, because it's, it's been, it's a pandemic. This has not happened in a hundred years and no one had a script that you could follow with this. And I'm not gonna claim that we were perfect for sure. I'm, I have no doubt that we could have done some things better and we always can. No matter what it is that we do in this business, we can always improve. And if you have specific things that you want to tell us about or you want to speak further, you're welcome to give me a call and we can talk about whatever it is that you think that we could have done differently or we can do differently going forward. But, so that was the past. We dealt with the past and one thing that was different last year was that the state did mandate that we wear masks at one point. It was mandated by the state of Ohio that we had to do it. It's different this year and I can say that we're split into two counties. Our school district is, and the reason why we haven't put anything out yet to this point, Sandusky was mentioned as having a plan that was put out. And we do, we did meet as a superintendent group with Erie County, Sandusky being one of those in Erie County. And the group came to a consensus about what we should do in Erie County as a group. But because we're split, we purposely have waited a little bit because we do have an advantage. It's an advantage and a disadvantage to be split in, by county sometimes because you can get too much information or not enough and it, I don't, we don't need to go into all of the nuances of that. But today, we had a meeting with the Lorraine County Superintendents about this exact subject of where do they stand? There's more schools in the Lorraine County side that participate than the Erie County side. So I was on a Zoom call with all of the superintendents in Lorraine County today. And when it all came down to the end of the day, Lorraine County is mirroring what Erie County believes and feels about this as a best course of action. And that is not to mandate masks, it's to make it a choice to wear the mask. Because the majority of our staff are vaccinated, they're protected, and they're not in danger of giving your children COVID because of the fact that they've had the vaccination. At least that's what we think the science is saying at this point, to the best of our ability is, as far as the information that's come in. Also, by September, mid-September, it could be anywhere from the beginning of September to the end of September, maybe beginning of October, the vaccination is going to become available for kids that are ages six to twelve. That's a parent choice whether or not those kids, the kids take the vaccination, as you know. The vaccination has been available to kids that are thirteen and up. And as of this point, and it's rising daily, one-third of that population from ages thirteen to eighteen are already vaccinated. So we're getting.
That's of our, in, in the Vermillion District?
That's, that's indicative of Lorraine and Erie County, that, those percentages. I can't, I don't know the exact percentage in Vermillion.
Right.
So when I'm using that, I'm using the numbers that the both, that the both health commissioners are giving me as a rule of thumb.
So if, if a child gets vaccinated, how do they, how does he get reported?
So there's a reporting process that we, we go through Erie County similar to last time. We have a coordinator in our district that will notify the county. And then the county at that point will take over to notify the families that they're going to need to be quarantined. There's a quarantine guideline that's been put out now by the Health Department and by the, by the Ohio Department of Health that it's also been certified or going to be used by Lorraine and Erie County. It's a flow chart, basically. And to summarize what it's saying in the flow chart, if your child is not vaccinated and comes in contact or, or is identified as having COVID, they're gonna need to quarantine. If, if a child is vaccinated and comes in contact with someone that is unvaccinated, they're not going to have to co, to quarantine at this point, whether they have, if they had the, had the vaccination. Masks are another, that aspect of this, and we're going to post this flow chart out. I waited until today because I wanted to talk with the Lorraine County group of superintendents today to be sure of where we are on both sides of the county. But that's the consensus right now, is that we're not gonna require, make it mandatory to, to wear masks. However, one of the things that we have a little bit of an issue with is the buses. If your child is gonna take the bus, we are gonna require that they wear a mask. That's going to be mandatory.
And the reason?
The reason is that the, there's a possibility, unfortunately, that federal funding is connected to our buses. And that has been, it's not a, a federal law, but they call it a, I'm not gonna tell you the term for it because it's a little bit, this is, is as clear as mud sometimes because of the technicalities of this, but it, basically, it's an administrative order from the CDC to the schools across the state of Ohio that masks are mandatory. But with that.
In a confined bus situation?
That's right.
We call it transportation, is that what?
That's right.
Yeah.
Right. So with that in mind, and the fact that we don't want to lose federal funding, and it's a twenty-minute bus ride, we're going to require kids that are coming to school on a bus to wear a mask. Other than that, when they get in, it's a parent choice of whether or not they want to wear a mask. And we're highly recommending that you do, but we're not mandating, and neither is the state. So I hope that that clears this up for you and gives you a better peace of mind. I know that right in this room, there's a parent that feels differently, and I'm sure she's not the only one. So unfortunately, the school is in a predicament here because they can't make everyone happy in this situation. Just like last year when we opened up then closed down and then, you know, the, the year proceeded as it did. We knew at that time that we couldn't make everyone happy and we did the best that we could. We are offering for grades eight through twelve an online academy for students that do not want to send their, their children to our schools. We're not offering it from K to seven. We're one of the few districts in the state of Ohio that is doing it. North Ridgeville is one that I heard from in Lorraine County. No one that I know of in Erie County is doing it, and I'm not saying that to, to toot our own horn. It's just that we do believe that we have a good product to offer in eight through twelve and we can keep that going. And it's an academy and it's an option then for, for parents. At this point, we're not offering anything K through seven because I could tell you that this is, this was a tough year for teachers. I'm not telling you something that you didn't know. Last year, for them to have to do Google Classroom and teach your children and bounce back and forth like they did was rough for you as parents and for them as kids.
Thank you. You guys did an amazing job.
Thank you.
The teachers really did.
Thank you.
They really did.
Yeah, I, I think that our teachers technologically were way ahead of a lot of other districts because we've had Apple products in our district. It's not the Apple product, it's, it's being able to use any product, no matter what the brand was. It, it, we just had some teachers that, not, all of our teachers did well. Yes, sir, you had a question.
I just, you were talking about you're gonna have vaccination clinics at the school, is that what you said? Or a pop-up thing?
We have a clinic here at the school and we will offer the vaccinations for families that want to take the vaccine right here in our school. It's right here in the high school.
The reason why I ask is I have two children, thirteen and seventeen.
Sure.
And they selected the vaccine for my kids. Do my kids need my consent to get the vaccine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was my biggest concerns about the school.
Yeah, we wouldn't, definitely, we wouldn't give the vaccine to anyone without, you know, parent consent. And we will have the convenience of having a clinic here at our school. It, it really was, we opened up that clinic right before COVID hit and that's not all that, that the clinic will offer. We'll, we'll be presenting that out to the community and letting you know all of the services that that clinic will be having at the, at the community's fingertips. So eventually that's gonna be open up, not just to students and staff, but the entire community will be able to come in and use the clinic. Sure. Yes, ma'am?
I had just a, a quick point. First of all, thank you for being transparent with us and sharing kind of the process.
Sure.
Um, I do feel like there's a need for that transparency across the board.
Of course.
Especially with the mask mandate on buses versus being optional in the school, there's a lot of confusion.
Right.
Um, and discussion happening around that, and it makes perfect sense when you describe the federal funding as to why that mandate's in place. And the Sandusky Register had put out other schools and kind of what their policies were, and that was mentioned, the bus policy for wearing masks. So I think that would be helpful to just communicate that across the board.
Yeah, we'll let people know and, and be transparent and tell them that we're fearful, quite honestly, of, of losing the funding and other schools, where, other schools thought about ignoring that mandate, quite honestly, in Erie and in Lorraine County, but they thought the better of it because if you lose that much money, it's significant and we just can't afford to do it. Yes?
Is it possible that the CDC could come back and change this, change your decision?
Boy, you know, one of the things that was mentioned was the level, you know, it's on red right now. And the level of infection compared to last year is not comparable. In Lorraine County, there's only twenty-four cases. Last year, at this time, there was one thousand five hundred. So I don't think so. From what it's looking like, from what I'm hearing from the commissioners, this is not nearly at the level of infection that it was. Sure, people are getting upset about this because they see a, a rise. about this because they see a rise in this, but it's still not anywhere near where it is. And I'm not anticipating, I think that we're going to be where we are maybe at the end of the year where you're still going to see it, even, even staff that have the vaccine. I could tell you right now, we have staff that even though they've had the vaccine, they're wearing a mask. And that's their choice. And no one's going to be upset with them or care about that. And let everyone have the level of comfort that they feel that they need to. And I think that that's the most common sense way for us to go about this, quite honestly. Does that help everyone?
One more question. Will there be any differences across the board for students that are vaccinated versus not vaccinated?
Only in quarantine. If a student is quarant, they won't need to quarantine.
If, for exposure?
If they're exposed. So...
How will you determine if a kid has COVID? Are you testing on site or?
We have test kits here, actually, on site.
That goes up into the brain?
No, not that one. It's not that invasive quite. It's not that level. But we do have test kits here that can help us that have been given to us by the Health Department. As a parent, if I were you, I'd probably want to go a step further than what we give, honestly. And we'll tell parents that, that we will give you the test here, but we'll also probably recommend that if you want to be certain, to go as far as doing a more invasive test.
Anything for the sporting arenas or anything? Any difference there? Is there funding that would affect?
I have an email here that I brought with me. It's, it's not drastically different. Nothing that is anything that drastically different than what I'm telling you.
Are there any restrictions on attendance?
At this time, no. No attendance to the events, no. But, you know, the parent is making a point here. This might ramp up. I'm not anticipating it based on what I'm hearing from both health commissioners. I think that we're trying to, everyone's trying to make life go on here now, living with this virus. It's going to be around and it's not ever going to go away from my, from my understanding of the way that they've categorized now this virus. There's a term for it. I've got it written down in my notes here, but I don't want to put Crystal on the spot. I'm sure she knows what it is, but...
I was trying to pull it up.
Endemic. It's an endemic.
The endemic versus endemic.
Yeah, it's, at this point, it's here to stay. It's never going away. We're always going to be dealing with it like the flu.
Came across something earlier that I feel like might be pertinent, just for people to know. And I didn't write my notes on it, so I wanted to pull it up because I thought if I, if I tried to summarize, I'm for sure just going to bomb it. But there was another amendment, actually, that was passed. And I feel like this might be pertinent to some of the questions that you guys are asking in regards to, the specific verbiage that they used was, basically, can you discriminate against people who didn't get the vaccine, right, and make special accommodations and things like that for them? Oh, well, you didn't get the vaccine, so now you have to sit six feet apart, but you did, so you don't, right? Sort of that sort of thing. And it was signed into law that you cannot infect. An amendment would prohibit public schools, public colleges, and universities from mandating a vaccine that is not fully approved so that it can, we cannot mandate, no public school, college, university can mandate the vaccine. Right now, it still has an emergency use authorization. So until it gets full approval, and I'm not saying that at that point we could or would, but this was passed, that it cannot be a mandated vaccine because right now it's not fully FDA approved. Also prohibited, public schools from discriminating against the individual who has not received a COVID-19 vaccine, including requiring the individual to engage in or refrain from engaging in activities or precautions that differ from the activities or precautions of an individual who has received the vaccine. And Dwyane did sign that. That's Hospital 244, if anybody gets interested. Yeah, Governor Dwyane did sign that. So I don't know about that.
So will there be any restrictions on social distancing, whether or not the kids are able to sit together at lunch?
Yeah, they're recommending three feet of distance. And we're going to do our very best in every case that we can. It's the most difficult at lunchtime at the elementary buildings. But we send the kids out for recess when the weather's good. We spread them apart as much as we can. We've accomplished that at the high school. We split lunches, basically, this year and running a totally different type of lunch schedule. That's helpful here at the high school. We're going to do our very best always to keep wiping down the surfaces, keep the three foot of distance, and use common sense. That's what we're trying to do in this situation, as we did last year. And we tried not to make it difficult for you as parents. And no matter how hard we tried, though, it still was difficult. There was no getting around it. This is, this has been hard for everyone. And remains a challenge. The mental health aspect of this for kids has been tremendous. And I think we're going to see some fallout of that. We already are as we're coming back. We're seeing, before we even hit the buildings here, and hearing about kids that are having difficult times. I can't imagine what we're going to be walking into, but that's our jobs. That's what we do. And we're going to make sure that we're in contact with you as parents and getting as much help as we can. We just hired, we put up for hire a mental health therapist because we anticipate that this is going to be an issue. In addition to the counselors, we have more counselors on our staff than anyone around us. We've got three at the high school, two at the middle school, one at the elementary school. That's a luxury that most schools don't have. So we're going to really lean hard on the counselors. We're going to lean hard on the mental health, new mental health therapists that we're hiring. And our teachers are really good at building relationships with your kids and we're going to do the best we can.
So I have a question. If they're separated by three feet, let's say a kid three feet away had COVID, what happens? Was the presence in school halls? We, and they tell me my son was exposed, or it's only within the three feet, with a period?
I don't know the age of your child. That would affect it some. Okay, so they're a young child. And then what would affect that situation is if your child is wearing a mask and that person next to your child was, had, was identified as having the virus, your child would not need to be quarantined. That's different from last year.
What's the space where if my, I would not like to have my child wear a mask, what's the space in between where I would get a call that says my kid needs to be quarantined?
It's that three foot around your child where they're sitting that's going to be the rule of thumb as far as if someone's getting a call and we find out that they become ill and we test them, that's going to be that, that ring around your child, basically, is who we're going to be looking at. Were they wearing a mask? And what's the situation?
Yeah, but I don't understand. If they're in between classes and they're walking in the hallway, I mean, invariably, they're going to come within three feet of each other.
Isn't there still a measure of contact tracing that happens, right? And you look at where the kid's been, who he's been with?
Yeah, but it could be from the hallway. And you would not know.
But in the hallway, one thing that we did differently last year and we will continue to do is we do spread kids apart. We do look at those transitions and we do our very best to maintain that distance there, too. But we, all of this does get traced back, like Mr. Haber-Mills said. Yes, ma'am?
Actually, with the delta, it could be under 15 seconds. 15 seconds is what the transmission, I wasn't sure. Is the time still, I haven't looked at that yet, all that flow sheet, but is the time still in there? Like last year, within three minutes?
15 minutes.
Are they still lying there?
Yeah.
And that's fine. I'm just letting you guys know that because of this thing going from a three to five RNa to an eight, I mean, it's as contagious as a chicken pox now.
Yeah. Yeah. Everyone's going to start becoming more aware of that. The good news, and you know what, it's maybe debatable that I'm saying that this is good news, but it appears that the more people that get vaccinated, the more that this is starting to curb, this whole issue.
Yes.
And the data that I gave you, which is a third of the population that is from 12, 13 to 18 now, so far, that was it, that was as of last week. This is actually increasing more. So one-third of them are already vaccinated. And our staff is over 90% vaccinated.
Will you continue to communicate the incidents within the school district?
Yeah, that'll have to get reported out like before. There'll be an awareness of you as the community of what's happening.
The mayor used to, Sarah, I, I don't know if this is right, but I remember the mayor stating how many COVID cases were active in the city of Vermillion. Do we have that number? I know he did it last year.
I haven't seen it in a while.
I've lost track of that. You're right. I know that at one point they were doing it. I haven't, I haven't heard of it in a while.
I haven't seen it before.
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't know.
Yeah. Lisa DeLeese is our assistant superintendent and her and I are going to work on putting this out to the community as, as the plan. We're going to check one last time with Erie County superintendents because I've got to let them know now that it was late in the day when the meeting ended with Lorraine County. But I, that's the advantage. I bounce back, I say, hey, this is what Lorraine County's doing. So we'll talk to Erie and assure them that they're on the same track as Lorraine's. And so we'll put the...
What I think, though, that flow chart, once you see the flow chart, it's very specific about what happened, when it happened, how it happened. So we'll have to, I mean, that was something that, that we as administrators in the district, the nurses, you know, we'll start that contact tracing. The minute we hear something, we'll start, you know, we kept very detailed logs last year of who was sitting where, even lunch at the high school. We had seating arrangements and kept logs. And no, it's not ideal. But, you know, in order to be able to contact trace and keep people safe, we have to still continue some of those pieces. But I think once we publish that flow chart, it's very clear what those parameters are and what will happen if you're vaccinated, not vaccinated, if you're within three feet, or if I'm vaccinated and somebody's close to me, but I was wearing a mask, I wasn't wearing a mask, I'm vaccinated, I actually might have to wear a mask for like 10 days or something, just so I'm not, you know, there's, it's very clear what we would have to do. But I think we just need to get that information. Once we finalize everything, get that out, it'll clear up some of those questions. And they have not changed the flow chart. Last year, we had like five flow charts in 10 days. That one has stuck around since Fridays.
Does everybody feel better about it than when you came, hopefully?
Yes.
Anything else? Any other thing that's on your mind that, that, don't hold back?
I actually had a question. I was listening to you guys. Did you say it costs $57 a day to transport one child to, was it the range or where was that?
Everest.
And so what is that, taking them to?
We have, we have some students that we can't service here. We do our best with special ed students and students that have a disability that if we can service them here in our district, we do. But sometimes if there's a need for us to transport a student outside of our district, then there's a transportation fee that gets connected with our district. And that's the reality of it is that we have to pay a cost.
We're obligated to do that.
I was just curious. I just heard that.
Yeah, that's the reason. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, number 10. Date and location of upcoming board meetings. Board meeting will be held in the workforce development room at Vermillion High School, 125 Sanford Street, 10 Vermillion, unless noted. Regular meeting Monday, September 13th at 7:00. Regular meeting Monday, October 11th at 7:00. And regular meeting Monday, November 10th at 7:00, which was a date change. Looking good so far? Number 11. Recommend resolution for the board to move into executive session for the purpose of matters required to become confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. I'll note. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haber-Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Time is 8:05 PM.
8:05. Thank you.